Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I invited guests, city staff. Thank you all for joining us here at our public work session on today, April 7. I want to also thank my colleagues on council for showing up and being ready to do the work of the people. I'd like to thank Mr. Carter, our city manager. I would also like to thank Attorney Derek Challenger for being here, of course, our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Good to see everybody. With that in mind, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Dr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Hugo?
Present.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Present.
Mr. Tillitt?
Mayor Glover?
Here. Mr. Carter, sure you have the floor?
Thank you. We have only one presentation before this evening. I have the honor of leaving this discussion.
I don't know which way you want to do it.
Well, where's the best?
But you want me to go first?
Sure. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Just say next.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, my colleagues, and those of you who showed up in the audience. I think this must be a topic that everybody wants to talk about. So we'll endeavor to get through this this evening based on the title of the screen. Here, you see that we're going to talk about collective bargaining this evening. The purpose of this particular discussion is we're not trying to make a decision here tonight. We're just trying to pass out some information. And one of the things I need everybody to understand is I'm going to try and present this in a neutral version, not trying to convince you either way of what you should do. I just wanted to give you some information, and then you make your decision based on the information that's provided. So we'll have an opportunity to do some discussing at the end. As a matter of fact, there's near the end of this, I have some kind of thought-provoking questions that I want to kind of throw out to start the discussion, and then we'll jump into the discussion after that. All right, next. First thing natural, we want to talk about what is collective bargaining? Collective bargaining is the structured process through which employees and their representatives negotiate issues such as wages, benefits, and working conditions. Again, as I go through this, I'm going to attempt not to be persuasive for or against collective bargaining because that's not the purpose of me being here tonight. But tonight's conversation will view collective bargaining as a method of ensuring that employees have a voice in shaping their work environment without taking a stance for or against the practice. The goal is to understand the process and to examine its implications in a thoughtful and balanced manner. Next slide, please. Talk about the history a little bit. In 2020, the Virginia Assembly passed legislation permitting local governments to establish collective bargaining ordinances. Following this change, City of Portsmouth took its first step in September of 2021 by adopting a resolution to consider collective bargaining. And in November of 2023, a significant vote by a record of 4 to 2 with one member being absent furthered the city's exploration of this process, authorizing the execution or creation of an ordinance. Now, this background provides the context necessary for tonight's discussion or this session. I want to make sure that everybody appreciate that this is an evolving process. It didn't just arrive. It has taken us some time to get to the point that we are tonight. Next slide, please. We will also consider how other localities in Virginia, and specifically our region, have approached collective bargaining. Alexandria was the first locality to adopt such measures in May 2021 by setting an early example. Richmond expanded the practice to include a broad range of city employees. And in November 2023, Portsmouth became the only city in Hampton Roads to approve collective bargaining pending adoption of a final ordinance. Additionally, several other counties and Falls Church City School Board have taken similar steps. This slide highlights that collective bargaining is a part of a wider thing than just in Portsmouth, that other people are considering this and some actually have moved forward. Next slide, please. As the conversation turns to our stakeholders, we must objectively review the potential impact on city residents and taxpayers. Collective bargaining can have financial implications, particularly influencing city budgets, how we collect tax revenues, and funding for other available services. The focus will be on understanding these possible changes and weighing the associated costs and benefits, and then figuring out whether or not we as a body want to endorse one perspective over another. But those are just some things that we have to consider. Next slide, please. Another key area for consideration is to affect non-Portsmouth public schools. Changes to the city's financial commitments due to collective bargaining may have ripple effects on school budgets and even on teacher salaries and school operations. Remember that Falls Church is a school board that has actually adopted collective bargaining as part of their process. Tonight, I'm going to ask the council to explore these possibilities, considering the broader context of public service as we look at how we want to debate this issue. Next slide, please. This decision also extends to our nonprofit and social service organizations that rely on city funding for contracts or services. Any adjustments to financial priorities resulting from collective bargaining agreements might indirectly affect these organizations. This part of the session will present an impartial examination of how such changes could influence the ability to deliver essential services to our community. Next slide, please. The potential regional implications of collective bargaining must also be considered. Actions taken by Portsmouth have already and will continue to set a precedence for influencing how labor relations in our neighboring communities are affected. I've gotten several calls from my counterparts since I've been here asking about what we're doing, how we're doing, why we're doing. I don't really have a lot that I can give them yet because we're really still trying to figure out what's the right way to go. One of the reasons that I wanted to bring this as a discussion is because I think you guys remember I've told you before, I'm pretty much a person that either we're going to do it or we're not going to do it. And one of the things that we have to do as a body and as a board and collectively is determine what are our next steps forward. Next slide, please. So we're transitioning to a closed session where we'll discuss some key issues that we need to discuss tonight. One of the things I'm going to ask you to do is review a document by Ms. Cynthia Hudson. Some of you may have this already. Hopefully, all of you have this. It's kind of a step-by-step guide of where we need to go from where we are now to the end of this. And we need to kind of revisit that and figure out what in that works for us and what we want to do collectively. Ultimately, at some point, we need to have a public vote where we're going to either approve an ordinance or reject an ordinance. That is either the final step or the beginning step in this whole process. None of us get to move forward without that. I think that has been in review for quite some time. My city attorney, in her absence, has said that we want to make sure we take care of that when she returns, but want to make sure that we're thinking about that because that is like the key thing that has to happen for or against for us to move forward. Next slide, please. As we enter into the discussion portion of this, I'm going to ask that you consider several key questions. What are council's goals and objectives for collective bargaining? And once we determine that, how do we communicate our position to the public and to our workforce? What kind of relationship are we looking to have with our employees and/or their union? And how do we collectively address residents' concern about the potential impact of collective bargaining on our municipal services? Next slide, please. So all I was supposed to do tonight is set the stage and then allow us to start the discussion, realizing that there will be a closed session and some things we'll have to discuss in a closed session, but as much of it as we can, we need to talk and let everybody know where we stand.
Councilwoman Thomas, may I have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Carter, for the information. I know you said you didn't want to sway one way or the other, but something I would like to hear more about that I don't really see, I didn't really get so far is just I heard the effects on stakeholders, but I want to see here some of the positive effects that have happened, especially looking at cities that have had collective bargaining ordinance for a while, such as Alexandria since May 2021.
Okay. One of the things that I think is a positive, based on conversations I've had with other people in the region, and I've had the pleasure or displeasure, whichever way you want to see that, of working with unions. I've only worked in a municipality with unions and U-Marys, Arizona, where they have a fire union, but the rest of the city is not giving notice. I've worked with other unions. It's a pretty large organization, such as San Diego County Office of Education, where we have close to about 7,000 employees, and most of those were in the U-Marys. But from conversations with other people and my own personal views, is that what unions does is give you a real single voice for your employees. Right now, I have employees talking to me all the time about, and all of them have a different perspective on what's the right thing to do. What that does for me is allow me to kind of tone down some of the noise and allow a voice that comes forward and says, okay, this is what we think the best route for the city is. It also allows us to put some really unique things in place to try and address some of the issues that our employees have had traditionally. I will tell you that from Steve's perspective, when you have a union or don't have a union, that does not negate or change the way I'm going to try and advocate for and treat employees. I'm always going to try to do the best thing for them and move them and their career forward as best I can. So having a union doesn't make that any better. Not having a union doesn't put them in any jeopardy of that. So that's just Steve's view.
And I just want to follow up on that. And so just to follow up on that, I think you were saying it allows like that one voice and for that one voice to communicate from employees to you, right? But you always said this, if you aren't, we try to manage the city as if you are not in the position. So with all the good intentions, what I've heard is that union collective bargaining also allows for that accountability and safeguards, but whoever's in that position, they know that they always have that voice, whether it's you, whether it's someone else, or whether these seats change as well. So that's some of the positive things that I've heard from collective bargaining. And then I'm sure there's some other positive notes, especially from Alexandria. I used to live in Alexandria, and just in terms of their employee retention, overall worker satisfaction, safeguards that they have with certain high-risk jobs and so forth. So I just wanted to kind of understand, or at least let the public hear more of the other positive effects as well as the concerns that were presented as well. But if we can discuss more, I'll pause for a second.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor, you on the floor?
Thank you, Mayor, and kind of go along with my colleague there. I think me and the mayor may be the only two that were here early on during the inception and doing the vote to-
You're part of that September vote in 2021?
Yes.
Okay.
It's hard to believe it's been almost three and a half years ago, and we're still at the point where we don't have an ordinance to build on the positive. And the power point there, I think, left out, the Elizabeth River may overflow the banks if a union comes here. But on a serious note, on a serious note, we're always talking about long-range planning, and I think knowing from year to year what that cost is going to be would be a benefit to help us plan the budget. And also recruitment. I think everybody is aware that we've had issues in recruiting employees. So I think that would help stabilize that and may even enhance the recruitment of employees. So there are positives. Early on, we were given some numbers that were way out in left field on what the cost would be. Still haven't seen, I see a lot of may's up there, may do this, may do that, but we need to be grounded in some real numbers, not poison pill numbers, if you may. You know, there are people, localities, as you've mentioned there, that have adopted ordinances, so we need to get grounded in the facts on what they have experienced. Reference that. And the other thing is, it takes two to communicate. You know, I think we need to hear both sides as far as the benefits. I'm sure there's some things that we've left out and haven't thought of that perhaps we need to hear. So, you know, it's not like we're communicating with the enemy. We're communicating with people that provide services to our citizens. So we need to be, I think, at this point, open-minded with that and realize there's two people, two groups that we need to hear from.
Absolutely. Attorney Challenger?
I just wanted to add two things. One, there was a work group that we had several years ago in which we did meet with the union. We had representatives from the finance, human resources, and we discussed this whole process. We actually worked on an ordinance, and then there was a change in where it ultimately went. So we did have that process before. It's been some years ago. The other thing we talked about with the budget part of it and being able to forecast going forward, there is not a lot of legal restrictions that deal with collective bargaining. The statute that governs this is 40.1 to 57.2. It's very weak on telling localities how to do collective bargaining, but there is one provision in here that's relevant to this point of budgets. It says, "No ordinance or resolution shall include provisions that restrict the governing body's authority to establish the budget or appropriate funds." The reason why that's significant is, obviously, looking at the context of where we are today, the stock market has fallen off of a cliff. We had a whole issue with whether or not the federal government, the funds are going to go to the cities. So it's hard for cities in this type of environment to be able to forecast years in advance. When we came in, forecast what's going to be going on three months from now. So I think this particular session of the statute is very important because it deals with not being hamstrung by a budget years in advance. So I just wanted to point out that particular session of the statute and also just to let the public know that there was a work group that met for maybe six months, maybe five or six months. It was very good working with the union. We met, I believe, maybe once or twice a month, and so that was helpful. So we have had the opportunity to get the union's perspective, and we haven't done it recently, so I don't know what have changed since we've met, but that went off about six months.
Councilman Tillitt, sir, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say that I echo the sentiments of my two colleagues, Councilwoman Thomas and Vice Mayor Moody, as far as the benefits of collective bargaining. To Mr. Challenger's point in regards to the budget, any budget we plan out for forecasting, you do that with CIP, we do that with anything that we have the fund, we're looking five, 10 years in advance. So of course, also to your point, with the structure of a ordinance, city council has the authority to develop what that framework looks like. The Commonwealth has not tied the hands of a locality to determine what collective bargaining can and cannot be. City council, we get to decide what collective bargaining looks like. And so it's kind of, in my opinion, it's like we're saying we're scared of ourself on determining what collective bargaining looks like. It's the seven of us that determine what collective bargaining looks like, and I'm not scared of myself. And so I think that we need to be able to make rash decisions, strong decisions. We do that every day. Something we're reminded of every meeting by Mr. Carter is decision, is a yes or no decision on what that looks like, and we have to be able to take that power into our own hand. In the presentation, it talks about cost. To Vice Mayor Moody's point, you know, we've been given costs that you would have thought would have brought Armageddon on. I think at one point, somebody gave us a price tag of 15 million. I wanted to, first of all, is that accurate? And what does that initial cost look like? Do we have an estimate of what that looks like?
Based on the information that I've been able to collect and my own research, I think the cost is going to be somewhere between a million and a million two annually. Now, that is more based on things that the city needs to do to prepare for this. That does not take into consideration whatever the agreements are as for collective bargaining.
Yeah, correct.
So that could be on top of that if there's some things that, you know, modify the budget that way. But for the positions that I'm going to need to hire, for the training that we're going to need, and for the process that we're going to have to employ, it's going to be somewhere between 1 million and 1.2 million.
Got you. All right. And that sounds more rational, less than 10% of what we were initially told.
I don't know about that one.
And so I do appreciate that right there. Also, on some previous slides, I didn't like the presentation when it talks about the effects of stakeholders. I understand we have to talk about positives and negatives, but the way that presentation, like we brought the schools into it. So it's kind of like we're positioning schools versus city's workforce. It's either we do collective bargaining or we damage the city, the school division. Same thing with the nonprofit and social service organizations, like we're positioning city's workforce versus the community's most vulnerable communities. You know, we can't present that in that light because just with any budget item, it's a give and take. We understand that a budget has to be balanced. You know, we understand that there's going to be some things that we're not going to be able to fund because things do take priority. However, you know, I just don't want a message to be left out of this room today that it's collective bargaining or it's schools, or it's collective bargaining or it's social services, or it's collective bargaining or it's nonprofits. Because at the end of the day, the budget is a full picture of the entire city. And once again, the city council has the ability to determine what is the priority. And education, collective bargaining, city's workforce, social services, and nonprofits all have a space in our budget, and there is no way that we are going to say no to any of those. And there is room for all five of those items, four of those items, to be included in a budget. So I just want the community to know, and I want schools and everybody to know, that we can easily come up with a budget that does not damage or hurt anybody because of a decision of protecting the workforce of the city.
Okay. Can I say something?
Go ahead.
If it was not to damage anyone or present our workforce as this vulnerable group that has to be protected from something, this is a group that I cherish, work hard with them to really elevate who we are and how we do things. And whether or not we do collective bargaining, like I said before, has no determination on how I'm going to fight for them and what I'm going to try to make sure happens with them and their careers. So thanks for pouring that out, and that was not the intention.
No, I understand your intention. Nothing you've done to this point has led to any ill intention, so I don't want to say it's against you. But also, you know, when we talk about, one of the questions you asked in the presentation was what is council's goals or objective? To me, what that looks like is security. It's ensuring that our workforce is secure. It's ensuring that our employees have, excuse me, equitable compensation, safety in the workplace, employee engagement, budget sustainability, all of that. Because at the end of the day, what we need to do is regardless of who is in the seat of the city manager, who's in the seat, because it's going to come a day where none of us are going to be at this table, regardless of how we may feel about it, there's going to be a day that none of us will be here. And part of what I signed up for to be on city council is to ensure whether I'm not going to be here in 15 years or 20 years or tomorrow, is that Portsmouth is in a better position than the day I started.
Absolutely.
And so that's part of what collective bargaining helps to bring about. And knowing the history that the city has been through over the last five, 10, and 15 years, I think we owe it to our employees to say that not only do we hear you, but we're going to take action to ensuring that you're safeguarded, the workforce is safeguarded. Because at the end of the day, just like we're not going to be here, these same individuals aren't going to be here, but it's going to be a next group of people that are coming to be here. And so Portsmouth has an opportunity to really take a stand on not only localities but regional. And when we also talk about regional entities, it says collective bargaining in Portsmouth could set a precedent or impact labor relations within Hampton Roads region, neighboring cities could face pressure for their employees or could be compelled to consider changes. Well, that's, you know, when we create incentives for raises and bonuses, you know, our job is to make Portsmouth stand out, to bring them to the city. So when we do bonuses and raises, that's causing Norfolk, Chesapeake, and everybody else to go up to the drawing board and say, hey, how can we change and bring people back as well? And I think that's part of what keeps the region competitive, is what makes the Commonwealth what it is. And also, the General Assembly, this is my last point, the General Assembly just passed collective bargaining on the state level. It was vetoed by Governor Youngkin. But what we need to also pay attention to is what happens next year when there's a new person in the governorship? Are we going to have collective bargaining pass on the state level? Because it's going to come. And then that governor will sign it. And so at that point, will we be forced then to do it? Or do we need to be proactive in doing it now where the cost can be lower than when we're forced to do it? And so, you know, I think those are conversations that we also need to take into consideration as well.
Councilwoman Bryant, you have the floor?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Given that there are few examples in Virginia, this is relatively new, are there examples that we can look at outside of the state of Virginia for a city that's similar in size to Portsmouth?
Well, I'm sure there has to be some.
Are there some case studies that we could look at, some cities in particular that would show us in real time what the pros and cons have been for them?
Absolutely. I will endeavor to find them. I don't know if I'm talking ahead, but I will-
No, no, no. Certainly not.
Maybe somebody from one of those unions around here may be able to give me some guidance on that.
Right, and given there's so few examples within the state, and these cities are not the same size as Portsmouth, it would be useful to see how this plays out. Thank you.
It may be helpful. At the very beginning of the collective bargaining process, the state of Virginia, local government attorneys had a task force, and we had some very good students from UVA Law School who did all this research on other places that have done collective bargaining where we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. So as a result of those great students at UVA, I have some resources that they- So as a result of those great students at UVA, I have some resources that they provided to me, and I will endeavor to get that to you about other places that have done this and all the different types of collective bargaining that are options. There's like a decision tree of like all the different options you can do. And this is really designed at the very beginning of when you're considering collective bargaining as to all the different options. But we have some material that I'll be happy to assist with the city manager of other places that have done collective bargaining, so we can have some examples.
Thank you.
Good.
I just want to add on to this point, just because I lived in Alexandria before. Alexandria, they're not the same size as Portsmouth, but they're very similar in geographic type of setup, employee setup. I'm not, they had some positive results, but again, it would be helpful, I think, to look at what they, what a city like Alexandria may be even. These are larger cities, Fairfax, Arlington, and Prince William with much larger budgets, but just to see some of the positive or, I'm not positive or negative, but just some of the metrics that they've been able to resolve around the collective bargaining. And then I also wanted to just point out, when we talk about the ordinance, to Councilwoman Tillage's point, that is passing the ordinance to then allow us to move forward once it passes on the state level with that framework set in place. And we would determine like what's allowed in that framework and what's not allowed in that framework, or was that set by the ordinance at first?
The way we are right now, we have an ordinance that's already pretty much drafted. We established that particular ordinance. That ordinance would dictate the actual procedures, what the bargaining units are, what the procedure for certification of different unions, how their election would occur. All of that would be outlined in the ordinance. So that's like the, for lack of a better word, the bible for our interactions with labor organizations in the city. And so the way we did this was we tried to create a situation where we don't have to do it with each potential union that comes through. We're doing it on the front end and saying, okay, this is how it's going to be, this is the framework, and this is how any particular union who wants to represent one of the bargaining units would have to play.
Okay.
So I think that is very helpful because obviously, we have some unions in the city who are very developed. And they already have meetings, they already have the infrastructure, and you have others who are not as advanced. So consequently, I think right now, the ordinance is, if we decided to go forward and everybody was in agreement with the ordinance, that could happen in pretty short order. But just to let you know, the next step of that process is they have to become certified at that particular union. Then the whole process, the negotiation with the union, and then the end goal of this whole process is a collective bargaining agreement. And a collective bargaining agreement, maybe three years, five years. And so that's the end goal of this whole procedure, is you get the ordinance ratified, and then the next step would be the negotiation. Obviously, the unions have to become certified, so forth and so on. And then there is a collective bargaining agreement that's for a certain time period. That's the general gist of, but the path forward would be going forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Challenger.
Councilman Hughel.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Carter, I appreciate you putting these four discussion questions in front of us. I want to talk about the first question. You know, when we considered the vote back in the fall of 2023, interestingly, I don't recall that there was a discussion amongst that city council around what were the goals that the council wanted to derive from moving to collective bargaining. So each of the individual council members had their ideas, but we never, as a council, really had a conversation around where do we have alignment on what we want to derive out of collective bargaining? Just as we saw with the conversation around priorities at the retreat that we just had, a lot of overlap, we could get some alignment around those priorities. Similarly, I think, we need to have the conversation around the council's goals and objectives on behalf of the city.
Right.
I think there's a perception that collective bargaining is going to be good for the employees and bad for the city. It doesn't have to be that way. In fact.
Right.
I think as we go through the discussion around goal setting, we need to understand, so what does the city get because we have moved to collective bargaining? Some of those things have been mentioned already. I mean, we have employees who now have a voice at the table, no matter who's sitting at the table. And we count our employees to bring good ideas forward. And sometimes they've been frustrated in the past because the people sitting across the table from them didn't have to listen to their good ideas and could give them lip service and then move on. And so there are benefits potentially to collective bargaining for the city, which kind of gets to your fourth question, how do we address residents' concerns? Well, some of that is simply presenting to the residents, what do you get because we've taken this step? It's not that we've just given everything away. There's, this is a negotiation, and there's going to be some give and there's going to be some get. And so I think the discussion that we haven't had that we need to have starts with question number one, what are the goals and objectives that we want to derive from collective bargaining? So that as we, because again, going back to the, you know, the draft ordinance that we've been looking at now for a while, we haven't collectively even discussed the meat and potatoes that are in the draft ordinance to look for, those things that are going to produce goodness if we change a word here or fix a word there or accept the words that were originally drafted. And so, yeah, my hope is that we take the same amount of time to wrestle with that question as we did with the priorities question that we wrestled with during our retreat.
Councilman Dotson.
One of the things we need to do with the agreement, to be fair to the collective bargaining unit, is to have the performance standards that we've talked about very detailed outlined. And I'm hoping we get those done soon.
Hope it's not a plan, we will do that.
Okay, because the negotiation with them, a lot of people would like to have job satisfaction. And if we can tell them what is expected of them in their job and hold their leaders accountable for that performance, we're going to see a lot better job performance, a lot better job satisfaction from our employees. But we have to have our part done for that. And those performance standards, I think, should be a key part in the negotiation of this, so that not only can they give their members the satisfaction of getting the job done, but we know that we are holding their feet to the fire to get that job done too. And like Mark said, both ends win here.
In Steve's estimation, you might as well speak, Mayor.
You have the floor, sir.
In Steve's estimation, this is a bargaining, which means you sit and you tell me what you want, I sit and I tell you what we want, and then we kind of figure out how we can get to something, some middle ground between those two things. Nothing that I will ever do as part of this city will be without a way to measure for the not, we've actually gotten what we said we were looking to get. So part of any negotiation we have will be a set of KPIs where it will be pretty easy to say, we hit it or we missed it. As a result of hitting it, hey, we all win. As a result of missing it, well, then we got to make some adjustments.
Some adjustments. So I'd love to see us take the next step forward to say like Mr. Hughel said, to take some action on this and schedule some heavy discussions on this so that we can then prepare ourselves to go for open meetings with the public and discuss their deeds with it. So I don't know how we make a, what we do, do you guys already have plans for that or something?
Absolutely not. One of the things we're talking about in our closed session is what's the next process?
Good, we'll do that.
So that when we come out of that closed session, we'll have a plan to discuss with anybody in here. Okay, guys, we've made a determination of how we're going to move forward, and this is the plan.
I'm done, thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas?
You know, I'm going to hold my comment then after our closed session so that we can get the discussion going.
Fair enough.
So after listening to all the discussion, there's a few observations. First of all, I think you putting, because me and Mr. Moody work here, I think you putting up all of the potential wins and losses or positives or negatives is important for two reasons. We must be all accountable for the decisions we make, and there is a high level of responsibility. So you need to show the total picture. There's no more weighted to the negative, more weighted to the positive. As I understand it, the reason you do collective bargaining, the idea behind it is people or groups believe that they are getting, they would get something that they are not otherwise getting today.
Correct.
What we did in good faith as a city is we looked at the compensation study. We looked at things that were brought to us from our fire department, those individuals and the union that was concerned. Changes were made. And whether you have collective bargaining or not, change is still a process. I think we have to keep that in mind. The other thing that we have to keep in mind, we talked, this rosy talk, but there's other things that go into this. For example, when I looked at collective bargaining, and I've done a lot of research and I've talked to folks from other cities, not just in Virginia, number one, we have processes in place. We have a civil service board, we have opportunity to deal with grievances, we have different things in place, is that correct?
We do, but if we.
Okay. I just want to get to a point. Let me get to the point that I'm making. So we have checks and balances in the process. When we have even gone through this discussion, what really was kind of enlightening to me is no one really looked at what the cost it is to the city of Portsmouth. Not only in setting up new systems, new systems that will have to go to administer collective bargaining, but what does it cost from a fiscal standpoint? One of the things we need to understand from a fiscal standpoint, Portsmouth is one of the most fiscally strapped cities in Hampton Roads, which means, which means that financially, if there was a significant downturn and we had already signed up for X amount of dollars, then we have to comply with those X amount of dollars to the detriment perhaps of our citizens, number one. The other thing is, you know, collective bargaining, it sounds good, but I've also talked to my mayor colleagues around the region, and one of their concerns is the cost of collective bargaining and how to continue to administer that. And we talk about other localities, which is true, some of them in Virginia have adopted collective bargaining. For example, on January 1st, it was reported that Fairfax County is forecasting a $300 million budget shortfall for their 2026. And one of the reasons that Fairfax County indicated their shortfall, why is there a budget shortfall? The county says funding for collective bargaining agreements and pay increases, the county employees are driving up costs while the county is receiving less. Now, we have changed our compensation study, our compensation plan to be more fair, I think, perhaps with our fire department, to add for more of the situation, I guess there was compression in pay. And we in good faith sat down and we said, and I know you worked on that too, Mr. Carter, we're going to change that and make that better. The process works. If you add additional layers to the process, not only are you going to add additional costs, but you are going to add additional disruption. And I'll give you a point in case, because this is important. When we went through this process, what people don't understand, my colleague, the vice mayor, said, well, it'll give better pay to people. What we struggle with in this region, we all trade employees. We don't have net new employees for the most part coming in. Portsmouth will raise their fees or raise their compensation, folks will leave from Chesapeake. In fact, Chesapeake is dealing with some of that now with their fire department, if you've been reading the paper. So what I'm saying is, we just trade people. Collective bargaining is not going to solve the problem of trading people. Because no sooner than that doesn't work for someone, they're going to go to another municipality. And that's been proven time and time again. What we need to look at as a responsible team here in the city of Portsmouth, I'm not suggesting we do what everyone else does, but when we add up the total cost and disruption, not only to our city, but to our citizens, what happens in a downturn where we don't have as much real estate tax revenue? 52% today pays real estate taxes. What happens if that goes down? See, those are the kind of questions I think we need to ask ourselves more so than we're trying to satisfy one group of people. I love the firefighters. I love the police department. I love our city workers. And we will do the best that we can do to support them and provide to them a fair salary based on the job that they do and give them access to all the things that they need as an employee. My position has always been that way, but no one has been able to answer to me specifically, would collective bargaining as a general rule overall improve all of the things? And you, Mr. Carter, even yourself, coming here, we've talked about it, the employees need certain things, right? And your staff, and you are really providing that. And I've seen, I can tell you just from my observation, what I'm hearing from employees, there is a whole new energy in our staff, and people are really excited about the job that they're due. Job satisfaction doesn't necessarily come from you giving somebody something. It comes from your personal satisfaction of doing a good job.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, before we start pulling these levers, we better make sure that our people can afford this. And it's not just one group that we have to, there's 97,000 people in the city of Portsmouth. And my thoughts, every day that I wake up, are on how we best take care of those 97,000 people.
Well said. And I want to actually lean in right to where you last ended, Mayor, how we best take care of the 97,000 people. And Mr. Carter, in our meetings, one-on-one together, you always say we are, you know, we provide a service to the city. We all work for the citizens to provide a service. And one thing, just, you know, looking at some of the initial information, just getting informed about collective bargaining, that initial, what are the goals and objectives? The workers are important, but like you said, the 97,000 people in this city are important. So when I was thinking about collective bargaining, learning that it really is accountability and safeguard for not just the workers, but for also the citizens. So that right now, the standard, you know, ambulance utilization rate is 30%. Portsmouth is at 50%. Our citizens expect that they call for paramedics, for 911, that they will be able to get help. If one of their loved ones is having a heart attack, and I'm sorry I'm getting emotional about it because it's close to home, that they will have the right response times within that, because we're held accountable that we are providing the right equipment at the standard and level that is important for the services that we provide. So it is a win-win. Collective bargaining is a win-win in accountability that we as a city are going to provide the training, equipment, work conditions for our workers that then in turn provide a service to the citizens. So that's just, I wanted to make that clear on how I, I think you're right, Mayor. Like, we have to make sure at the end of the day, all our decisions impact a better quality of life for our citizens. And for me, that's how I see collective bargaining being of a benefit there.
No, and to your point, I will add, because this needs to be made public. When we had the issues of staffing within our fire department, I know the council, I know the chief, and even the union, everyone was concerned about that. And what was the result of the actions that we took? We hired more firefighters, correct? We hired more paramedics.
They're considered fully staffed.
They're considered fully staffed. We also, in terms of apparatus, we probably have, right now Chesapeake's firefighters are kind of fighting about apparatus that they need. We invested in apparatus. Today, what is our status on apparatus for to meet the needs of our citizens in terms of equipment? Are we pretty much up to standard as it relates to? Are we pretty much up to standard as it relates to what the goal was?
I'm not sure what the goal was, but we've, we've replaced several pieces of apparatus in our city over the last few years. And then, just so that you know, that apparatus is not cheap at all. That's a, a regular firefighter's gonna cost you a million dollars.
But the point I wanna make is that we, there was a need, there was a need that our firefighters came to us and the chief, and the team came to us and said, they need solved. And we met that need. We listened, and the response was overwhelmingly given, so much so, I would say, I haven't even heard any complaints about apparatus and things that have come from the firefighter lately. So I thought that at least we were beginning to make the standard and the strides that folks had asked for, which means that we were listening, we were paying attention, and we were moving things in the proper. So all I'm saying is, be careful sometimes what you wish for, because one thing doesn't always solve all the problems that you already have. And if we already have an opportunity to discuss and have an open dialogue, I don't know why you need to add a whole lot of stuff to it, but, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. You, you did make some valid points in regards to us listening and us being proactive, making sure that those needs were met. And I thank city council and our city leadership for addressing those issues. But firefighters aren't the only department that would benefit from collective bargaining. We have our general service employees, and those individuals and those departments, they also have a voice that we need to, to listen to and have at the table as well. And I don't think collective bargaining is saying that we're not listening by us, you know, collective bargaining is not saying that we're not doing our job. It is just making sure that there is conversation and communication happening on both sides of the aisle. I think that, and I can positively say over the last, at least since I've been on city council, I have seen a difference in the services that are provided to our city employees and also to the citizens in a positive light. I think there could be more, but we are making those strides to getting there. And like I said, I don't want you to think, or anybody to think, that collective bargaining is a way of us saying that we're not doing it. I just think it's a way of how we can improve on years to come on being a better city. Because I do think, to your point, you know, we, we've addressed police compensation to where we are now. We still have work to go. We've addressed firefighters, we still have work to go. And then this year, Mr. Carter, with the general wage salary, that we still have work to do. So we are making those strides, but, you know, to the point is, is other things that we, it's not just salary, and it's not just firefighters, but the workforce as a whole. So I do look forward to us having that conversation.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Councilman Bryant.
Can we just add to that discussion? Who, who would be included? Is that up to us in defining the ordinance? Who, who are the employees in total?
Who would be included in the collective bargaining process?
Yeah.
Everyone.
Everyone.
Well, there's a, there's a line where you call management and then the labor. So for general wage employees, those are gonna be the managers. For police, I think it is at captain is where the division is. And for fire, I think the battalion chief is where. So everybody below those positions would be eligible. Now, they're not mandatory, even if you have collective bargaining, it's not mandatory that anybody joining you, and make people join a union, that's gotta be something that they never do. But if they choose to do so, all the employees would be covered.
Schools too?
I mean?
Schools?
Yeah.
No. Schools would have to go through school board as separate?
Exactly.
Okay. So city employees of a certain...
City employees, yes, ma'am. Okay. Are we ready to go into closed session?
Yeah, I think we're ready. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Vice Mayor Moody, could you read the closed session motion, please?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dotson?
Aye.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................